I can take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
President Phillips?
Present.
Trustee Christian is absent.
Thank you very much, sir. Item A three is the approval of meeting minutes. We're gonna, well, item A two is the approval of the agenda. We're just gonna pass over that and we're gonna use the agenda that is in front of us. Item A three is the approval of the meeting minutes. And since there's only one member here right now, we're just gonna hold those minutes over until the next meeting. We're going to go to item B one now, which is a public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak on any matter related to the district's facilities at this time. Members of the public may speak on individual items of interest in the agenda as the items are discussed, meaning in the same manner that we do in the normal board meeting. So there will be a public comment section tied to each item. And so that's how we will be doing that. Public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. So folks out there in TV land who have public comment that they want to make about items that are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do that. Please raise your hand before we get into public comment. Going once, going twice. Dr. Will, do you see any public comment right now?
No hands.
No hands, wow, okay. And three times it's gone. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, all right, seeing that, we're gonna move on to item C one, which is updating the 2016 facilities master plan and prioritization process. And the presenter is Mrs. Mahia Cooper.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us today. We're gonna be talking about the update of the 2000 facilities master plan. So in the original 2016 master plan, there was an identified group of schools, originally 21, which included Lake and the former Wilson Elementary School, which is now Michelle Obama. Those two are actively either completed or in the process of being designed. So now we are down to 19 priority sites. And these sites were created or established because they either had very little improvements made from the, when they were originally constructed, or had an active facilities project that was kind of put on hold because of the 2016 master plan. With that in mind, the, the idea of a majority of the bond funding was to go to the 19 priority sites to be able to complete, either finish the facility project that had started or completely rebuild remodel the campuses. Knowing that, we had a community survey back in August that looked at the original criteria that was used to prioritize the original 21 sites and asked the community what were more, what of those criteria were most important to least important? And also, if there was any additional criteria that they would like to see in consideration as we update the master plan. Out of that process, we had almost 50 different criteria to consider. We established a prioritization committee, which consisted of different groups across the district. Parents and students from each feeder pattern, as well as representatives from our labor partners. And those were brought together to discuss the criteria and come up with a recommendation to bring forward to the facilities committee. They did discuss the, the different criteria and they put, brought forward the items that you see here on the screen of the criteria and the metrics, along with one more, which was removed after the last facility or two facilities committees ago. When the prioritization committee brought them forward, they were originally intended for the 19 priority sites. However, in the discussions at the facility committee, some of these criteria were more applicable or spread beyond the original 19. And so they were pulled out to look at all district school sites, including the 19 schools versus just being applied to the 19 school sites. So that's the list that we are left with here, which showed the criteria and the metric. The other ask that came out of that facilities committee was for staff to recommend a weight for each of these criteria. So, next slide. To come up with the, the weighting, the facilities group really stepped back and, and thought about and reflected upon the intent of the original 2016 master plan, what was in the measure R language, as well as what was discussed during the prioritization committee? And what came out of that 2020 community survey? And really thinking about those things is recommending this as the criteria weighting kind of rubric. So the, we have just our basic criteria with weight of one. The weight of two has needs that would require a larger amount of, of work. So a bigger project where in the basic criteria, there might be things that could be fixed without doing a major remodel. Or also in the number two category is the providing equity items. And in the third weight is the health and safety requirements. So the utmost important, the one with the most weight would be those that affect health and safety. Next slide. So going back to the criteria that were recommended and kind of discussed as being applied to the 19, we have the ones that were in white in the previous slides. So the functionality score really covers everything from how well the school, you know, if there's sinks in the science classrooms, if the school itself is designed well for facilitating the educational program. So those can be some major changes as well as some minor ones. So we put that in the two category. Seismic needs, of course, is a health and safety criteria. So that went at the re-weight. The age of school had some variability, right? Because some schools were more well-built at the beginning. And some schools have had improvements since they were originally built. So that, that was placed in the one category. Physical condition, however, has some of the health and safety concerns as far as the structural integrity, as well as ADA compliance, trip hazards, those different things, that was why it was placed in the three category. Percent of black and brown youth and percent of students who are low income ESL or foster was placed in the two for the equity piece. The number of restrooms and sinks per student was placed in the one category because we are, we would, we're capable of fixing that theoretically with a smaller project, if needs be. Lack of view windows and access to green space on campus. This one was placed in the, the two category because depending on the structural system of the building, adding windows can be very complicated and a huge project in undertaking. So that's why it was placed in the two. Level of ventilation operational of windows and HVAC system, that was placed in the three, mostly because through COVID and our fire seasons, we have learned that there is, you know, ventilation is a huge issue and can relate very closely to health and safety. So if you move on the next slide. So the next steps is that these recommended criteria, metrics and weight for the 19 school sites need to go the full board for adoption. Once adopted, the data for these can be applied to the 19 sites and we can create a sequence out of that for priority ordering. We also have additional components beyond the, the priority sites. And those are these district-wide initiatives of technology or quality and thermal comfort in student housing. So looking at those components, we need to be able to take the prioritized list of schools from the 19 school sites, as well as these district-wide initiatives, look at it in a whole and create a total of an implementation plan. So next slide. Shows that in the more graphic form. Potentially. Here we go. So we have, like I said, the full priority school sites. We have additional needs beyond that, which in the measure R language, it talked about air conditioning. That has been kind of expanded in this COVID world to include air quality and thermal comfort, technology, student housing needs. And, and is another category of work of really understanding how across our district we're accommodating new programs and addressing areas which are over capacity. So all of those need to come together into options that can be selected through the board. And once an option is selected, an implementation plan can be created and implemented.
Thank you very much. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back and I just wanna walk through these slides. And along the way, I'm gonna ask questions, probably a lot of questions. Okay, so if we, thank you. So if we can go, you're on the first slide already, I see that. Okay, so this slide is titled proposed criteria and metric. And you kind of recap this already, but I'm just making sure that I understand. So the criteria on the left-hand side, those are the criteria that we are applying to essentially the 19 remaining schools that not, that have not had significant work. Is that correct?
The ones in white.
The ones in white, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then the ones that are in this yellowish color, those are criteria that were at some point with the ones that are in white, but they've been removed after our discussion because they apply to really all of the schools, not just the 19, right?
Correct.
Okay. The metrics that you have on the right-hand side, can you talk to me about what those metrics are and how and why you are proposing them to weigh the criteria?
Yes, so functional score was an original criteria from 2016. And the original master plan team, which was the Darden IEP two team, went out and assessed every one of the schools and created a scorecard for the different components of how well a school performs. So they created a functionality score. So we are using that as the baseline for functionality. The seismic reports were created in 2002. We have updated.
Mrs. Mahia, Mrs. Mahia, the functionality score?
Yes.
Is that the functionality score from 2016 or the new one? Or a new one?
No, it's from 2016.
Okay, why aren't we using the same functionality score?
For the most part, except for the critical needs projects, these sites have not changed. So the original, how they were functioning in 2016 is about how they're functioning now, minus the COVID situation.
Is it, is it possible that functionality has decreased at a site over the last five years?
It is possible, however, it probably equally decreased across the district versus one school decreasing more than another. Right, because like, for example, in 2016, the standard for the district was that there was a projector in each room, but it was on a cart. Now, when we build new schools, we put the projector in the ceiling or on the wall, right? Or we mount a TV. So that is different and it probably would be downgraded today when it wasn't before. But all the schools equally have that same problem, right? So they would all be downgraded across the board. So it wouldn't necessarily reflect the difference in prioritizing them.
So that's an example, but what about actual structures, for example? So like, let's say you have a school that has higher traffic. Maybe it has higher traffic because it has more students. Maybe it has higher traffic because there are community things that happen there. But for whatever reason, it has higher traffic. And with that higher traffic there has, it has experienced more wear and tear because of that higher traffic. How do we?
Right, so the functionality score really is only how well the buildings are providing education. So for example, like in a, if we had a science lab and the science lab had carpets and it didn't have any sinks, we would rate that very low in a functionality score because that's not what a science lab needs, right? Science lab needs sinks, it needs to be cleanable, it needs to be chemical resistant, et cetera. So whether that carpet was brand new or 50 years old, it would have a low functionality score. However, if you look further down the list at the physical condition, the physical condition says whether that carpet's in good shape or not. So they're, they're looking at the building from two different lenses, right?
Okay, okay, I, okay. So what I'm asking you really is like the physical condition part, I'm just jumping ahead.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. All right, so if you didn't have a sink in the science lab in 2016, you still don't have it.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, okay, that is helpful, thank you. All right, let's go to the next one. And this is educating me, but also, you know, hopefully people who are watching, you know, as well, so.
So there was, okay, there was a full seismic assessment report for, for these campuses done in 2002. There have been improvements made since there was a chunk of critical need projects that addressed seismic components. However, it's like the Richmond High, right? We tore down the buildings that had the biggest seismic problems. So we're not going to worry, but we're not gonna count those points, but there were other buildings that still had some level of seismic need. And so that's the, those are the points that would stay and we would just take off the building that was demolished. So that's how we would adjust the points accordingly.
Okay, and so that's the update for critical needs projects?
Correct.
Okay. Go to the next one. So explain to me why that is the metric for age of school.
So the, we use the permanent main, permanent building because it is the primary structure on the campus. So we weren't counting whether we put a portable out there in 2012, right? But basically, the main building on campus, when was it built? And that is the baseline because it is really the, the building that has the largest impact on the site.
Okay, and then the next one, the next assessment score, how or why is that the metric?
So this is the physical condition component. So when I was talking about those two lenses, this is that second lens of, okay, not only do you have windows in the room, but are the windows watertight? Are they, you know, still translucent? Are they still operational, right? And so this one, however, like you were concerned about how things degrade over time and whether they're degrading over time equally. We have the assessment score from 2016, we do not have an updated score. So that is the best third-party information we have at this moment in time.
Okay.
However, theoretically, site staff could go out or we could get a separate contract for somebody to go out and, and do that assessment if that's the desire of the board.
Why, why would we not have an updated assessment? I get the other one, the functionality assessment, because that is, it's kind of static, right? But the physical condition one, why would we not have a current assessment score?
There is a cost associated with doing it. And, and so it's a matter of whether we think that degradation over time would be significantly different from one site to another or not. Typically, it isn't, but it, you know, it is a decision, a cost benefit analysis that, that has to be made.
What, what is the cost?
For an, or for an architect or engineer to go out to 19 sites, it takes about a half a day for every elementary school and a full day for every middle and high school. So at eight, eight hours for $100, $150 an hour is, is what it would be for the actual walking assessment and then whatever it would take beyond that to create the report.
So eight times 150 times 19?
Well, it, it takes a half day for the elementaries and most of our schools are elementary, so probably.
And I'll chime in, it's usually four to five times the walking time for them to do the report and the analysis and the research. So if you're talking one day to walk, you're talking five or six days to write and research and do all the other pieces. So you quickly get into the potential of just those sites alone in the six figures of soft costs that don't attach to a specific project.
Okay. I might come back to that one. All right, take me to.
So the, the percent of back and brown youth and percent of low, low-income foster youth. So when we were talking about black and brown youth, you know, in the grand scheme of things, basically, it's non-white, right? And so if we look at the white enrollment around the district in these schools, it's, it's comparable, right? There's not a lot of difference. However, the LCAP does have significant difference from, from school to school. And so we felt like that was a better metric for this, for this criteria.
Okay.
That's what you see there. It is also what was used in 2016.
Was the LCAP?
Correct.
Are they gonna duplicate it, okay? I keep looking down, I'm writing notes. If we were in person, I would not feel the need to explain why I'm looking at over here and over there and all that kind of stuff and I'm writing notes.
So for the restrooms and number of sinks, there are, there is a code requirement in the plumbing code of how many toilet rooms you need per capacity. And so what we're using there, or what we're suggesting to use there, is a a comparison of how many student toilets and urinals there are versus the state plumbing code.
Okay. Have we taken a look at restrooms related to kindergarten classrooms?
It's a, it's a challenging, yes. It's a challenging process around the state, right? Because when these schools were originally built, for the most part, especially these 19 schools that were built long ago, there was an AMPM program for, for kindergarten. TK did not exist and preschool did not exist. So in the grand scheme of things, preschool has to have a restroom because we get licensed annually and part of that licensing is including the restroom facilities. So at some of our sites, the, the preschool actually takes over the original kindergarten classroom for that fact. Kindergarten does not have an annual licensing requirement the same way. Preschool is outside of Title V and then is actually in Title 22, which is why it's different. So for kindergarten and pre, and TK, there's significantly more classes now because we do full day and TK was added than there was originally. We are aware that there are schools that have kindergarten and TK classes in facilities that do not have restrooms attached to the rooms. It is a complicated thing to solve, though.
Okay. I have like several questions about this. So the kindergarten classes were built with restrooms in them, right?
Yes, however, there's typically two.
Two, right. Why were the kindergarten classrooms? But I understand that they're being used by TK and preschool in some instances, I get that. But why were those classrooms built with restrooms in them for kindergarten?
According to Title V, kindergarten requires restroom facilities within the kindergarten complex, although that does not necessarily mean directly connected to the classroom itself. But within the fenced-in kindergarten complex there, they are supposed to have restrooms, which is a requirement we have to meet when we build new. However, when you're just using existing facilities, we're grandfathered in.
But it's not true that we were using existing facilities, right? We created proper kindergarten rooms and we just gave them to another class. So it's, it's so like, let's pretend, maybe I don't understand what, what, what grandfathering is, but I think I do. But I'm gonna make an analogy for you, you tell me if this is the analogy, right? So before kindergarten classrooms were required to have bathrooms in the complex, traditionally meaning in the room, but it could be in the complex, like in the kindergarten area. Before that was required, before that was the law, if we had been using classrooms that were not compliant and then that law was passed, we'd be grandfathered in, right? Because we were doing this before the law was passed. So I'm, I'm, I'm not misunderstanding what grandfathering is, right?
Well, the the evaluation is only done when there's a major architectural project that occurs in that area.
But I'm not asking when the evaluation is done. What I'm asking is, were we at the time the law was passed, were we compliant?
I don't, that predates my professional experience.
But the class, but the rooms, the schools were built with kindergarten classrooms that had bathrooms in them, right?
It was the typical design.
Okay, so those schools were all built to the standard of having a bathroom in the kindergarten complex, right?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. At some point, we gave those classrooms away, right? Meaning we gave them to TK or preschool.
There's still quite a few kindergarten rooms that are being used by kindergarten. The question is whether there's still only two kindergartens or three.
Do all of our kindergarten classrooms have bathrooms within the kindergarten complex?
No.
Which of our kinder, which schools have kindergarten classrooms that do not have bathrooms within the kindergarten complex?
I would have to do an analysis to find that out. I mean, we're, we're aware of it, but it does change every year depending on the number of kindergarten. Um, but it does change every year depending on the number of kindergarten classrooms.
So there could be more or less classrooms that don't meet that criteria. That's what you're saying to me.
Right.
Okay.
And, and kindergarten is our highest fluctuating grade band, right? Especially this year. We, we lost a lot in kindergarten. Um, in some years we have more, in some years we have less, um, which also affects why TK is, is, um, at some schools and not at others.
Why do kindergarteners need, not just because it's the law, but why do kindergarteners need bathrooms within the kindergarten complex? Why is that important?
Well, I, I didn't create the, the law, but I would say that the most likely use of it is they are the closest to potty training, right? And so their understanding when they need to go use the restroom sometimes happens, um, later, and so they don't have as much warning, right? And so getting there is hard. The other thing is any kindergarten teacher will tell you that transition is difficult. So anytime you move from one activity to another, you lose kids and you have to get their attention back. And so when they have to go off to the bathroom, the likelihood of them coming straight back is, um, is, you know, they, they're easily distracted by the walk, right? And so the longer the walk, the more just chances of distraction there is.
Do you, I, I agree with all of those things. Do you think that it might be possible that it's also a safety issue of having small children walking away from the kindergarten complex to use bathroom?
I believe there are people who, who believe that.
So what are we doing to make sure that our kindergarteners have bathrooms in their kindergarten complex? Even if that doesn't mean in their classroom, but like you said, within the complex, the gated fence.
When we rebuild schools, we create a, a larger kindergarten complex than what we feel is maybe beyond what is necessary, but make sure that it's associated with other classroom spaces so that it can flex to a first grade classroom if we need it to be. But as far as like the existing, we don't have a bond program at this moment in time to create kindergarten complexes. So I have no project there. In the facilities master plan, there's no project that allows me to address that need.
So Mrs. Mahia Cooper, are you telling me that what we're doing to make sure, and this is going to sound a little, I don't know, flippant, I'm not trying to be, but is our plan to address the lack of bathrooms in kindergarten complex? Are you basically telling me that our plan is to expand the fence? So.
No.
What do you tell?
So when, well, it's, okay, so when you calculate how many kinders to build, right? When you're doing a new building, you have to calculate how many kinders to build. And, and students and capacities don't come in nice round numbers a lot of times, right? Especially because we have two different class sizes and class sizes fluctuate over time, right? So you have the choice of rounding up or rounding down. We round up for Kinder to make sure that our kindergarten complexes end our new builds. For example, Michelle Obama has five Kinders. Um, one for preschool, one for TK and three for the Kinder Program. So within the space of fifty years, right? Because that's what we're building for and that's the hard part. You know, fifty years ago, they had no idea that there would not be AM and PM Kinder. And they had no idea that we'd have TK and they had no idea we had preschool. So our approach, when we build a new campus, is to make sure that when we do the Kinder, we try to round up instead of rounding down. When we're trying to determine the number of rooms that can, that should land in the kindergarten complex.
Okay, and you're telling me that the bond program does not allow us to address restroom needs for kindergarteners?
No, what I'm saying is that, you know, my department is bound by what's in the two thousand and sixteen master plan. Those are the projects that were approved, right? And there is no specific project in there right now to address kindergarten bathrooms except for the full rebuilds. So in the full rebuilds, we're addressing it, correct? But I don't have the luxury of just deciding that, um, I'm going to use bond dollars to rebuild all the kindergarten bathrooms across the district.
Okay, you're saying that no one said we need to do anything about the bathroom, so we, we haven't really did. That's what you're saying. Not that we can't, but that it just hasn't been directed to do that.
We need board approval of a master plan that addresses. I mean, we're bound by what board approves and board told us to follow the facilities master plan, which defined the projects.
Right, and that
So that's what we're doing.
Right, and that didn't include anything around kindergarten bathrooms?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a a reason why the updated master plan could not?
At this moment in time, probably not. Um, I don't believe there's, I believe that bond language allows for the rebuild of, of um, restroom facilities, so our support facilities, so theoretically it could. Really, the master plan is bound by, or the spin deter of measure R is bound by the language of measure R. But beyond that, that's the only balance that we have.
Okay.
It would be, it'd have to be added to the project list. If it was initiative that the board wanted to seek, we would have to add it to the project list and figure out and estimate that to be added in.
Can you guys, um, do some research and bring back to the facility subcommittee what the issue is around, what the issues are around bathrooms for the younger children? Uh, please.
We can do that.
Thank you. Um, let's go to the next one.
So lack of window, view windows. So view windows are specific, right, to being, um, they're normally defined between three and, uh, seven feet and access to green space on campus. So what we looked at for a metric here was the percent of classrooms that did not have any view height windows and the percent of the exterior campus that is not green space. So comparing the non-building area of the total campus to how much of that non-building area is currently, um, landscaped.
Okay. And then the next one?
Level of ventilation. Um, so we coordinated with the MNO department to create an assessment score of ventilation that was, um, that included things like operable windows, access to outside air, whether that outside air was provided mechanically or not. Um, and, um, if that HVAC system currently provided cooling or, um, or had the exit, like I said, the access to outside air as part of the mechanical system.
Who does the assessment score for this?
This was created by our MNO department.
So this is something we did in-house?
Yeah, we, we used it. But it was in reflection of, um, some of the, uh, work that would have been done around reopening. There's been a, a full look at our HVAC systems.
So if you remember with the forensic analysis that was just done, that had a focus on ventilation and airflow. Plus, in the measure, there was conversation about air conditioning. So all of those required a much deeper look into that aspect that wasn't part of the process five years ago.
Okay. Okay. And then so then the remaining criteria. Okay, so let's move past to the next slide, if you don't mind. So the weighting standard, so we have one, two and three. And three is the highest score that you can get and higher is better in the sense of helping you get rebuilt, right?
Right, this is basketball, not golf.
The intent and discussion during the two thousand and sixteen master plan, how, how did you take that into consideration? Like, what did you look at?
So during the facility, there, there was a weighting process that happened previously, right? So the criteria from two thousand and sixteen was previously weighted. There it was actually weighted one to six, so we had a wider scale. Um, but the things that were higher on that previous weighting were the health and safety issues. So that was part of what also supported health and safety being that, that top tier.
Okay. And when we have, when you talk about the two thousand and sixteen and the discussions that happened or whatnot, um, I know that there were, you know, a lot of, there have been a lot of promises made to different communities over the years. Uh, or is, and I'm not, there's no right or wrong answer to this, so I'm not trying to get you to say something in particular, I'm really asking. Did you take that in the consider, I, I mean, like, how did you consider that kind of thing or not? I don't, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's a complicated issue. And it's a complicated issue anytime you address and update a facility master plan. Um, especially in this district where before the two thousand and sixteen master plan, there were a lot of promises made. And the problem was there were more promises made than money in the bank. And so there had to be decisions about who, who moved forward and who did not. Um, and so it is complicated to come back four years later and say, um, you know, you were on the list, but now you're lower on the list than you were before. Um, obviously, the ones that move up are happy about it, but the ones who move down are not happy about it. Um, however, things change over time, right? Um, four years ago, the discussion of ventilation wasn't there, right? It didn't exist, we just didn't pay attention to it. So different things rise to the top. And a master plan is always a living document that has to adjust to the situation on the ground over time. And, um, and that's just the reality of it. But it is a conscious decision that, that will have to be made by the board of, you know, when, when different schools' orders come up. You know, it did change and there is communities that are affected by that. The, the difficulty that, that we have at a district is that we need to look at the district at the whole and every child is our first priority, right? Um, but when you're in a community, your community's children are the first priority. So it's, it's never an easy conversation.
So I'll, I'll jump in. Whenever you write a bid or you put out a proposal, the criteria is where you should spend the most time. Because, and, and this is not meant as a dig or anything else, but boards and politicians and other elected officials are just that, they're people that make decisions with emotions. We can't make decisions with emotions on facilities, we have to make decisions based on metrics. So there's been a lot of work to, while honoring that there were promises made and making sure that those promises, the foundation criteria behind those promises was sustained. You have to exclude the names, it's almost like it needs to be a blind test where everything is done by criteria and what are the needs? And that's what this process was, was to build all of the different things that we know must be in there. We haven't calculated anything yet. So all we've done is focus on criteria and we think that's the right way to do things is talk about the needs and then you do the calculations.
Thank you. Um, let's go to the fun one, the fun slide for this is the fun slide.
I'm glad you think it's fun.
It is, this is, this is the fun slide. Um, so I'm going to ask some questions around, um, the weight, uh, for each one. Maybe not each one, but for some of them, I'm going to ask questions around the weight. Um, so I'm going to start with a functionality score. And so, um, Mrs. Mahia, um, and if I, uh, heard you wrong, just correct me, it's okay. Um, so what I thought I heard you say was in the functionality score that there are some schools that could have a one, some schools that could have a three, or some things that could be a one, some things that could be a three. And so you just picked two. Did I hear that right?
Well, that made it sound super arbitrary, but yes, on some level, that was the, the discussion.
Okay. Unpack that for me, right? Because like, and this is something that you all do, this is not something that I do, but like, if a school has something that causes it to be a three in function, like, so like, I'm looking at it like they're items. So like, let's say there's an item at the school that has a functionality of three, but it's a really important item. And if I'm looking at this wrong, just say you're looking at it wrong and, and help me change my perspective, right?
So nothing at the school had a three per se, right? Um, this was actually one to hundred scale, um, that was done. Um, but, so when I say things that were three versus things that were one, basically, let's go back to our science lab, just because that's always the easiest one to comprehend, right? The functionality score would have been less if a science lab, like a high school chemistry room, didn't have a safety shower, right? So technically, that is a health and safety concern, right? Um, however, a lot of the functionality pieces are, um, you know, did they, do they have the right furniture, do they have the right finishes on the floor? Um, do they have enough space? Do, does things exist? Like if you have a high school again and you don't have an art room, that, that goes down on your functionality score, right? Because you have a program, but you don't have a space appropriate to fill it, right? Um, and so you're operating it out of a regular classroom. So those kind of things are what functionality is. Um, so fewer of them are related to health and safety than the physical condition, which have more items in the, that make up that score that are related to health and safety.
So how, how does like, and I did this before and you, you pulled me back because I jumped ahead, but like, how does the functionality score intersect with a physical condition? Let me give you an example. The school has a science room, a science lab. But it is in such bad condition. Or, you know, the school has a gymnasium or some room. And it is in such bad condition. There are, there's mold in the walls. We're like painting over the mold and doing that kind of thing, like a bunch of patchwork. But like, it's in such bad condition that it really should not be used. At what point does poor physical condition equal no functionality?
So the way that this particular assessment is structured, it doesn't work that way. So what happens is functionality is almost like if you only looked at the architectural plans of a campus. And you looked at that architectural plan and you saw that gymnasium and you saw that it had bleachers and you saw that it had basketball hoops and places for volleyball poles. And it had a wood floor, it had, um, a scoreboard, those kind of things, right? You're just looking at it there. Now, if that scoreboard's not functional, the lights don't turn on. If the basketball hoop's missing the net, if the bleachers are manual bleachers and they don't even pull out of the wall anymore. Those kind of things, like those those kind of things, like those, in the functionality score, they're still present. So they count as being present. Because in the grand scheme of things, all of those can be fixed, right? So the architecture doesn't prevent those things from happening. So that's how the functionality score looks at it, is the architecture preventing you from being able to do your program? Now, but that's not saying that in the condition score, that doesn't totally bottom out. But the, and, and the reason it works that way, because I know you're struggling with this, right? The reason that it works this way is you have to think about how a master plan informs your projects. And there are many buildings out there that quote unquote have good bones, right? Well, good bones, a lot of times, has nothing to do with the structure. What it really has is good design, right? The design of the place, the way that the rooms are, are formatted, and the type of utilities that are present in them allow for things to happen that are supposed to happen. So it was a good design, the problem is it's rundown, right? And so that's really helps tell you whether that school is ideal for modernization versus reconstruction, right? Because if it's just rundown and the condition is bad, it doesn't mean that that building isn't useful, right? But it's very hard to take an unusful building, no matter how much money you pour into that thing, to make it useful again. Because it has everything to do with how that building is designed and what carts, pieces, and components are within sight of it versus how it's holding up over time.
Can I ask this question? So functionality score, I'm trying to like figure out something that I could like wrap my mind so it makes sense to me. So like, functionality score is that old building at Fairmont that was not compliant, and so we couldn't use it. So we had a building, it had zero function, well, I think maybe it had like half functionality for us, because yeah, remember the, the place where the seniors were?
Okay, yes, yes, okay, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So we had this building that we, was ours, and it was built to, to specs for the state. They did something else and did not, and built out, and part of the building, half of the building was up to standards, the Build Act standards, and half of it wasn't. And, and so the half that wasn't, that half had a zero functionality score.
Correct.
Because we couldn't use any of it, regardless of how nice it may have looked on the inside or not. Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, I get it.
Another way to look at this, though, is you have two schools that are the exact type of school. One has some facilities, but they're really in bad condition. The other one has no facilities. You have to look at the fourth metric and the first metric on this proposed weighting. And you can see how this now allows both schools to, that have identical needs. One has everything, but it doesn't work. The other one has nothing. So they wouldn't get anything on the physical condition, because they're a perfectly good school, but they have no functionality. So now they're getting the weighting there. The other school has things, but they're so old and decrepit that their physical condition brings them into the mix. So it allows for each scenario to be part of the weighting. And that's probably a better way for you to kind of wrap your head around how the two work together.
Okay, that's, I mean, all of this is really helpful. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to walk me through it, and the people who are watching as well. So seismic needs. Because I was gonna ask another question about the functionality and physical condition, and I actually think you just answered my last question. So I'm going, way to anticipate. Let's skip seismic needs. Because basically what you're saying is that if you have a seismic issue, you're a top priority, because you give them a three, right?
And just so you're, we're clear on how this works. So each one of these metrics are translated into a ten, zero to ten point scale. And so if you get a three, you basically like, if, let's say your functionality score is seven. If you, if we weighed it by two, it's now fourteen. So what we do with the weight is we just multiply what your score in that zero to ten scale is by the number of the weight. So that's how it, it works in the points.
Okay, so there's, I mean, so basically, you're, when I look at this proposed weighting, you're telling me how you're weighting this stuff on a one to three scale in relation to the other criteria. But each criteria is going to be broken down, or each metric is going to be broken down even further. So if you have two schools, for example, with poor physical condition, but one is much poorer than the other one, they will still come out higher on that criteria in the ranking, right?
Right.
Okay. Age of school, the metric is the age of the main permanent building. Why is that, why is that a one? Why do you give that the lowest weight?
Well, you have to think about it like this. So a, think about a twenty-year-old portable or a forty-year-old portable versus a seventy-year-old building, right? The way the portables are constructed, they don't hold, hold up as well over time as a stick-built building, right? And we have that condition across the district, even with our stick-built buildings. So some of them have stucco, some of them have CMU blocks. Some, they're constructed different, and also there's been some work on all of the buildings, depending on which ones they are. So while the age still reflects kind of the, let's say, the condition and the era and the vintage of what that building is, it's not necessarily one hundred percent a telling factor on whether or not that's a good school or not.
I think it goes back to the function, functionality and the physical condition assessment. Much as Alan had explained earlier about how a building could have great bones, and they would be functionally sound, or if it has bad bones to begin with, then it just functionally, whatever you do, will never bring it up to standard or make it usable to the condition we would expect today.
Let me ask you this, and this is a trivia question, I'm not trying to play gotcha, though, but I'm trying to figure this out for myself. Can you tell me the schools with the five oldest permanent main buildings?
I can, if you give me a minute.
All the time you need. I know we got one more item that we have to hit, and we will.
You know, the other component of this is you gotta remember that through the nineteen school sites, they stretch from the fifties to two thousand and six, right? So there is a big difference between the age of, of these schools. Because some of them were established because they got a, they had a architectural project that wasn't finished. So we do have some newer schools in this list of nineteen.
And, and while she's pulling it up, remember that the old saying, they don't build them like they used to? That is true. Some of the, and this is my sixth district, some of the best schools that I've ever seen were schools that were built sixty, seventy, eighty years ago, that the quality of craftsmanship was such that, other than wiring, modernization things, you never had to do much. So it, the condition is more important than the age, because you could have a school dry rot out that's only fifteen years old, because you used bad sealants in the roofs, or didn't do something.
Oh, like, so speaking like of that, right? So like Dejounte, for example, right? It's not a new school, but in many ways, it looks new to this day. And, and, and I believe that is because of the standard to which it was built. So my question is, what are we doing around that issue? So, yeah, they don't build it like they used to, if you let them do it that way. So like, what are we doing so they do build it like they used to? So we don't have to be replacing a school that dry rotted after fifteen years?
Well, that's where our facility, that's where our facilities, material and product standards come into play. So we do have standards that, that talk about what level of quality we are looking for in, in a building. And those are set standards, which we give to the architects at the beginning of every major architectural project.
I know since I've been on the board, there have been some changes around those. Have we reduced our standard? Are we building schools, are we trying to build schools? And I'm not talking about the design, I'm talking about quality right now. Are we building schools to the Dejounte standard in terms of quality? Not necessarily the design, quality? Or have we reduced the quality?
I'm gonna let Louis answer that, because he's much more familiar with some of the recent builds before Michelle Obama than I am.
And then I'm gonna chime in afterwards from the non-facility answer.
I, I would say no, we have not decreased the overall quality. What we have done is just moved, trying to be smarter about how we use our products and materials that are gonna give us the life expand we expect. What we have done is moved away over the life of the program. There was a, where we peaked, and actually did a lot of improvements to the inside to help longevity, such as wall finishes, easier cleaning, easier maintenance. And we've backed off on some of that for cost-saving measures. And as far as the building itself, the products going into the buildings, we have not lost any quality.
So, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, so if I say it wrong, just say, that's not what I said, because I'm not doing gotcha, I promise. And I love, I hope, I hope you guys really appreciate how we're just kind of meandering through these questions. Are you saying that we have kept the same, I'm just gonna say Dejounte standard, because that's easier for me to say, that we have kept the quality of the Dejounte standard in regards to what we're putting into the buildings? But we have backed up on some of the things that prolonged the longevity, prolonged the longevity, that prolonged the longevity of the buildings? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not prolonged the longevity, but helped maintenance. So the example is, if you look, Dejounte is a standard, right? So if you walk the Dejounte, Dejounte building, you'll find that's an early building that was built. So it has sheetrock walls, floor to ceiling, you know, you have to paint it all the time. I would say at the peak, you go Deansa, Deansa has terrazzo floors, it has wall paneling from floor to ceiling. It has another level of finishes. And we backed off on some of the finish levels that we do inside the building for cost-saving measures. So the building still has a fifty-year life to it. But there are some items we backed off on, and I don't necessarily want to say quality of finishes, but lifespan of some of the interior finishes, if that makes sense.
It does. So I'm asking if we are backing off on, you gave me the example of the, the finishes, the quality. So for me, life, if, if it has a shorter lifespan, it doesn't have as much quality, right?
The sheetrock will last just as long, you just have to paint it a couple times. So it's not like the sheetrocks can fall off.
There's another thing that's changed, though, that I think is important. When you go back fifty, sixty years ago, the professional craftsman, that was a profession. And today, they're using more technology, but it's a different type of industry as we go forward. For some of those that have been in the trade unions for forty, fifty years, it's changed.
My buddies in the building trades don't do as good a work as they used to.
That's not what I'm saying in any way at all. But what I am saying is that there was a different type of delivery model than there is today in the industry. This isn't a West Contra Costa comment by any stretch. This is a, in industry, construction industry comment. It's changed some, and so you see different, more mass manufacturing. You see more things that are slightly different, that aren't the same as the way you had almost customization back years and years ago. And so you see it in the homes, you see it in school construction, you see it in industrial construction. This isn't an us issue. We haven't lowered our standards at all.
Okay, and Mr. Freeze, when you're talking about the example that you gave with the finishes, how is that not lowering the standard?
I think it's starting to level the playground, playing, the playing field, right? I mean, it's, it's about what we can offer in the program to be able to stretch the dollars further to renovate more schools and not allowing, if you want to say, overbuilding some of our sites, as far as some of the level finishes in the building. It doesn't change the functionality of the building. It serves, you know, we meet the same standard, provide the same level of education to every student in the spaces. The science spaces don't change, the classroom spaces don't change. But there is a level of finish that we have diminished over its lifespan. There will be probably more maintenance costs that'll go into it. And Mr. Mahia Hooper said, you know, you have to paint it more frequently, you have to do some of those. But that, that, that's kind of that crossroad analysis, where you have to kind of figure out, where's the sweet spot, I suppose, when, when you build. And that's one of the promises we made with the 2016 master plan, was to look at our finishes, make sure that we're building at a standard that was, you know, equal to, you know, or, or, or greater than, you know, a fifty-year lifespan.
But then are we actually doing, so we, sticking with the finishes, we reduce the level, our quality of the finish, and then we have to do more maintenance to upkeep. Are we actually doing the maintenance? Because one of the things that, you know, I've seen, I've heard, is that we have reduced the maintenance staff over and over and over it again. And we have built beautiful buildings, and they're not being maintained the way that they should be maintained. So my question goes back to, like, if we talk about longevity, I mean, how are the buildings supposed to last fifty, sixty years? If A, we've reduced the level of what you're calling finish, and then B, we don't turn around and do the maintenance that we were supposed to do in the first place, and especially if you've reduced the amount of finish. You can't, you know, that's how you end up with all this deferred maintenance. That's how we ended up in the bond program in the first place, because we had buildings that just had generations of deferred maintenance. How do we, how, what are we doing not to end up in the same situation of generations of deferred maintenance? So we have to, forty years from now, just rebuild everything all over again at the same time?
I think what I say, you know, we reduce finishes, like, you know, we backed off on just exactly how much we put into it. But still trying to get it to a point that would ease maintenance over time. Another example is, you know, you said terrazzo floors. So we're not doing terrazzo floors, but we are doing, you know, there's lots of new materials out there as well. So we're doing non-wax finishes, things where we don't have to wax the floors, which decreases the amount of maintenance we have to put into it. We are still doing some levels as wainscoting, but we're not going floor to ceilings. We're only going, you know, three feet high, and that's kind of that rubber rail height, you know? So while, you know, we're trying to maintain that level, we've just cut back on, you know, some of the, over, over the top, if you will.
Well, and I want to jump back, go back fifteen years ago. The state of California provided direct funding for facilities and Fund 14 deferred maintenance that was designed specifically for what you're talking about. When we had the Great Recession in two thousand and seven, right before that, that went away. And then they also gave flexibility to school districts to take away the required three percent for routine restricted maintenance. And so the state stopped any funding for facilities and pushed all of this burden to taxpayers and to school districts to try to go out and get bonds. And the districts were doing that just to rebuild schools, not have any ongoing funding for that deferred maintenance. So the state itself cut the deferred maintenance and then also turned off the siphon to support actual facilities. So it was kind of a double whammy, and districts are limited to that three percent of routine restricted to do these pieces.
You also have got to look at what, how education is changing over time as well. So these finishes that, that Mr. Freeze is referring to most often occur in large, major hallways. And, you know, the double-loaded corridor is not necessarily educationally where the discussion is at this moment in time. And so Um and so, you know, it it's also kind of one of those things where it's just not as applicable as it used to be. Um we're not trying to get all of these kids to like funnel through and do the cells and bells model. It's, so it's not as um as needed because we don't have all of that rough happenings that that occur in the hallways when you're not necessarily building hallways.
So, yeah, and so we're talking about these finishes, but I mean, I just assumed that that was an example, right? And that he was giving an example, but that there are other things in
That's pretty much the main component of it that was reduced.
Yeah, we have not backed away on mechanical, heating, you know, roofing, waterproofing details. In fact, if anything, those continue to get more stringent as code changes. Um and we just know that's where to put our money into the building envelopes to make sure that we protect our facilities from leaks. You know, we've learned our lessons over the years. Um, you know, that's where the, you know, the dollar goes in the building to make sure we have a stable, stable structure.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the, the, excuse me, the next one, which is the percent of black and brown youth.
You wanna go um back a moment? I I have the older schools.
Yes, I would love, yes.
Um Riverside, Stige, Collins, Wilson Lake. Well, and Wilson's gone, so Grant.
Riverside, Stige, Collins, Wilson, you said Wilson, Obama, and Lake?
Well, Wilson has been demolished, so that doesn't technically count anymore. I'm sorry, I'm working off the two thousand sixteen list. Cuz that's the most, that's the data I have. Um Lake and Grant. So Riverside was nineteen forty, Stige was nineteen forty-three, uh Lake was nineteen fifty-three, Grant was nineteen fifty-six.
What's next? Can you give me the next three?
Linda is nineteen fifty-six as well, Fairmont nineteen fifty-seven, Highland nineteen fifty-seven, Valley View nineteen fifty-eight, although that has been demolished as well. Crest, uh, sorry.
I get that, you know, I'm, I'm good, I'm good. You answered what I needed. Um, I thank you very much. So I wanna go to the next one um for the wait for two. So so the criteria says percentage of black and brown youth. But it sounded like you were saying that you you were expanding that beyond that you were just saying that it was just basically non, non-white. Is that what I was hearing?
It's really UDP, unduplicated account students. So it's students that have, and unduplicated means that they have multiple factors that are impacting them. So your free and reduced lunch, your English learners, your foster youth, all of those components get folded into that mix. So it's those that have the most need.
So let me ask you this. So you talked about schools being overbuilt, right? We don't need to name schools because it causes confusion, but people have have eyes, right? So like this issue around schools being overbuilt. If we are trying to do something that is equitable, I'll give you an example, right? So every high school in the district has been rebuilt, every single solitary one, except the two high schools that are uh designated to serve inner-city children in Richmond and San Pablo. Everything else has been rebuilt, and they're very beautiful schools. So if we are actually trying to be equitable, why is it that a three?
I'll answer that, um because if you instantly make it a three, that's taking away the fact that there are physical conditions that are in there. There are other things that become safety hazards that might predicate that you have to take care of first, but you don't wanna dismiss it either. That's why it's right there in that two. So it has a heavy weight moving as we go forward. But it would not preclude if you had two equal again, and one of them was seismically unbalanced and molding with black mold, that one might jump ahead due to absolute need, and it should between those pieces. So it's giving, actually, an equity lens on all levels by having the weighting the way it is. If you make them equal, you could have things disproportionately go one way or the other. And the idea of metrics is to make sure all factors are put in there, and this does do that.
Well, what I'm, what I'm talking about, on, as I'm talking about that specific one. So it's a two. I mean, everybody knows that there are schools that have been overbuilt. And everybody knows that the places where schools have been overbuilt are not the places that have the highest unduplicated count. So like, I'm not saying that they don't have any, but not the places that they have the highest unduplicated count. So how do, how do we? So like, let's pretend that this was the metric when the, when the program started, right? And so like, we came from this base point. I, like, I would get that, but how do you build all of the high schools in an unequal, unequitable way? And then at the back end, be like, ah, we're gonna make it equitable, but yeah, we're not gonna weigh it too high. Um that equity portion, I mean, after all the other schools already got built. Like, how did, sell that to me? I I don't get that.
Look at the one just above it that plays into. Because if you overweight the age of a school, that can actually have the effect of becoming disproportionate. And you might have a school jump ahead that doesn't
But I'm particularly talking about this one, right? Like, I'm not talking about physical condition, I'm not talking about age. I'm simply saying that the schools that have not been rebuilt are the schools that have the highest unduplicated count. Um and I don't have their numbers in front of me, but I mean, if I was just to guest debate, and I'm particularly talking about high schools right now, why, 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 I'd help me, I, I'm just, I'm
So the, the intent of weighting, right?
Struggling.
Is to say that one criteria is more important than another criteria. So if we believe that the equity issue is the most important criteria and should be considered such, then its weighting should be the highest. The question, the what we put as the highest, if we go back Melissa, one slide, or sorry, mispronouncing, um the, you know, this was the, the parameters that we used as staff to recommend forward. Now, we understand that we are not the, the decision makers, so if it would like to be adjusted, we will do such. But the idea was that we felt that health and safety was the most important criteria and that the, but equity was a huge, a huge deal, right? And so it's in the two column instead of the one. But
I'll add in
Needs to be, it can get shifted.
But that also changes your weighting depending on, are you gonna then wait the levels of schools differently? Because the same community will have a different percentage of unduplicated count at the elementary school that goes to the middle school, that goes to the high school, the same exact kids. The percentage changes at each of them just because over time, kids don't turn in their applications, the numbers are different. So you cannot compare the unduplicated counts even for the same exact neighborhood at three levels of schools. This is a statewide issue. So if you're talking specifically high schools, they have, all of our high schools have lower unduplicated accounts than the middle schools that feed into them. All of the middle schools have lower unduplicated accounts than the elementaries that feed into them. So as you look at all metrics, then is it, are you weighting a middle school higher than an elementary school, or are you trying to wait all schools together? So when you're building a metric, you have to be careful how you build each piece. Otherwise, you have an unintended consequence one way or the other. And so you wanna find the right balance in creating a metric.
Okay, that is helpful. Thank you very much. And it was also helpful to just bring me back to the weighting standard on the previous slide, that your three is a health and safety requirement. But that was, both of those things were helpful. So number of restroom sinks per student is a one. And we just had this long question and answer about bathrooms around kindergarteners. Um, I have a question, and this might throw off some things. But how is number of restrooms and sinks, how is that not a health and safety issue?
Well, the, the piece about number of restrooms is if there was a um project that stated that we needed to resolve the toilet issue, we could put a portable toilet down and you would suddenly be within code, and you wouldn't have to rebuild anything, right? And so it's one of those um pieces that is solvable with a relatively small investment versus rebuilding an entire school when you look at the grand scheme of things. So that's why it landed at the one category, is that we could resolve it without rebuilding the whole school.
And back to disproportionate impact. You don't wanna create metrics that create a false narrative of need when you can solve it very quickly in a different pa- fashion.
Can you, no, I, that, what you're saying makes, what both of you are saying makes sense. Can you please, though, um look into the this bathroom facility issue, particularly for the younger children? Um, because I, I, I know, I asked the question, but I know that there are kindergarten classrooms that don't have uh restrooms uh in the complex, and you got little kids who are in the bathrooms with older kids and all kind of things that have the potential for creating problems for little kids, um which is not, um, I ha- I have little kids, uh which is not, uh, not cool. Um, so let's go to the next one. Um, I get number two. I mean, I'm saying number two, but I see why it is a two. Uh, okay. All right. So moving to the next slide, these are the criteria that you guys wanna bring to the full board, right? With this rate, so you can't see me, but like, I'm, I have like the screen minimized for the Zoom, and then I'm looking at the same slide presentation um on my main screen. So it looks a little funny, but I can't, I can't actually see you. So if you're nodding or anything like that, I, I only see um basically like a thumbnail of the slide that you're on, and then I'm looking at my own slides separately.
Yes, this are what we would like to bring forth.
Okay, and you guys wanna bring this forward at which meeting, what is the plan? Or the date that you're hoping to hit?
We come forward in April.
In one of the April meetings. Okay, all right, and then the very last slide, um completing the master plan. So you have the priority school rebuild project, so that part is on the top. Help, help me understand what the, the aqua-colored slide, help me understand what I'm, I'm looking at.
So beyond the rebuilds, right, there's other desires to be, to be accomplished with measure R beyond just rebuilding the nineteen schools, or however many of those nineteen schools were able to get through. Um, and so in the bond language, it talked about things like air conditioning and technology. Um, and so that's the district-wide initiatives that were identified as part of the bond language. Um, and they were not restricted to the nineteen school sites. It was a district-wide um comment. Uh, so part of what's happening is we are doing a HVAC assessment with um that a firm that's looking at all of our different um schools that do not currently have air conditioning or have partial air conditioning, and they are looking at them to find out what the need is across the district as a whole and what kind of options we have for providing not only the air conditioning component, but the thermal or the air quality component. Because a lot of our schools that don't have air conditioning also don't have mechanical means of bringing outside air inside, right? And that's where that, that air quality comes in, is getting that exterior air into the building. Um, so we are looking at that district-wide, so we'll have that assessment completed traditionally in this district.
Can I back up just for a little bit? So like, your last criteria is level of ventilation, right? And so ventilation and air conditioning is not necessarily the same thing, right?
No.
That's true.
Okay, so the ventilation issue definitely is a safety issue, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, how is the air conditioning a safety issue?
Well, we do have some schools that are, are very hot. It has been a continued issue. As the temperatures rise in the classroom, the education quality goes down. And so it is a health and safety issue, not only for the teachers, but the students, um but it also affects the learning ability. Even though we only have so many temper- temp- high-temperature days in the district, it's become more and more more and more days, I would say, over the last several years. And it's, it is disproportionate to the schools that are in the eastern, I would say, you know, closer to the Indian Valley that are air-conditioned, and the ones that are closer to the bay do not have air conditioning. Um, but this study will look at those schools that either lack indoor air quality. We're trying to take an assessment of those, as well as we're looking at means to help offset some of the hot days. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean full air conditioning in the school, but I mean, it could be some supplemental air conditioning that helps drive the temperature down. So we're looking at options that we can bring forward that will help the classroom environment.
And this is an equity issue, because if you have schools that have air conditioning that can stay open and operate on those hot days when you can't be outside, where you have the heat indexes and you have the other pieces, not having air conditioning precludes you from doing many academic activities, which can have a direct impact on achievement as well. So having the right ventilation and the right HVAC support does become just as much as having the adequate facilities, an equity issue as well.
And this falls right into our prior day scenario. Um, one of the assessments is actually is the, the um temperatures in the classrooms, which would um it is on the matrix that the board has approved already, that would um mean vacating classrooms as the temperatures increase.
Okay. Okay, all right. Um, this is just a really big item, uh which is why we're taking a lot of time on it. This is not a thirty-minute discussion. Uh, so some things are gonna have to be held over to the next meeting. We're gonna do the uh school services, cuz I know they're here, uh but some of these other items uh are just gonna have to be held over. So I'm done. I've asked my questions, uh and so we're gonna go to uh to public comment. And I wanna give people a chance to raise their hands. I only see one. Um, Mr. Gosny has his hand up. Um, is there anybody else? That's not a board member.
Here comes the second.
All right, uh, well, this person is a board member, but either way, uh, that's, uh, is there anybody else?
Nope, just the two. Um, so I will start with Don Gosney, you can unmute.
Thank you. You're not, a ninety-minute discussion, we get ninety seconds to talk about it. Please do not present this to the board, telling them that this comes from the prioritization committee. We were involved in establishing some of the criteria, but when the facilities committee directed staff to take control, the criteria list was amended, and the pri- the prioritization committee was taken out of the loop. As, the weighting was done absent any involvement by the prioritization committee. With, this goes back to almost ninety minutes now, with the functionality score, not all schools are static. Richmond High, Valley View, and Crespe have all changed substantially. Also, when somebody gets a chance, maybe you can refresh our memories about the community survey. Was this advertised to the general public or just to the school communities? Because I know that I was never notified about it, and I even own a newspaper and it wasn't given a chance to publicize it. With discussion about the kindergarten classes and the restrooms, if a student needs to use the restroom, they need an adult, outside of the classroom, they need an adult to escort them. Isn't it cost-effective to have the facilities in the classroom instead of having adults on standby for those times when they need escort service? And a great many of our schools have very little green space. Most of our high schools were built with a love of concrete. Would the board want to tell a school community that they don't get a new school because concrete was being Would the board want to tell a school community that they don't get a new school because concrete was being replaced with grass at one of the other schools instead? Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Sarah Butler.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I just, I didn't get to uh, watch your meeting from the beginning. But I just, I know this is a committee that's subject to the Brown Act and I just was surprised that there's only one board member, it appears. I believe you have to have uh, two board members in order to hold the meeting. Um, I believe the Brown Act says you have to have a majority of the board. And, and in your case, it's the two. So I just wanted to put out that, that out there. It doesn't uh, look good to the public to only have one board member. But I, maybe I missed the comment in the beginning. Thank you.
That is it for public comment.
Thank you very much. Um, I do not have uh, any discussion on this item. Uh, and this item is closed. Alright, um, staff. I would like us to take a five-minute break, if that is alright with you. So people can, um, and matter of fact, you guys want to take a ten-minute break? Okay, let's take a ten-minute break. Uh, I have four forty-two, we'll come back at five fifty-two. And then we will have a conversation around school services. Uh, and we will call it a day.
So I promoted them.
I said five fifty-two, huh? Yes, no, lord, no. Uh, four fifty-two. Okay, um, and just for people who are watching, we haven't taken any action whatsoever. We have just been talking. We didn't even vote on minutes. Um, so, okay, we'll be back at four fifty-two. Alright, thank you.
Okay. We are back live. So you ready for us to go ahead and begin?
Yes, sir.
So, we're gonna switch gears a little bit, talk about the, the other side of our facilities now.
Um, Dr. Wold, let me just say this really quickly. Uh, so, uh, trustee Christian is actually at a funeral. Uh, and he sent a text message. So, uh, that is where he is for people who are wondering. He's at a funeral.
So previously, the board had approved us to utilize the support of school services. To begin the process of looking at and analyzing the needs of our school facilities that are underutilized. So such as vacant properties or properties that had been deemed seismically unsafe that were not able to use for students. And so tonight, or today, we're gonna talk about the process that the board would go forward with. To be able to take those actions. And so, we're gonna talk about timelines that are hypothetical. This isn't necessarily the time on the board will determine that timeline and what is a seven eleven committee. So we have from school services, Robert McIntyre here, and then from Atkinson Anderson, the, the legal side, Stephen McLaughlin. Is here, if there are any questions about the law side. We just lost, there's Stephen coming. We just lost Robert, so we'll wait for him to re-log back on, and then I'll bring up the presentation. And we can go through the process for what is called a potential seven eleven committee. And he'll explain what that is, to be able to declare property surplus. There's two ways of doing it. When you want, if you do a straight exchange, you don't have to do a seven eleven, but that isn't as transparent. Seven eleven is something you do for all other types of property adjustments. And so, we're bringing forward the process. We would then take to the board the recommendations. So I'm just waiting for Robert to re-log back on. He said he had an internet glitch there. And if not, then Stephen and I will do a couple slides really quickly to get us going. And so while we're doing that, I'm gonna share my screen with the PowerPoint while we're waiting for Robert to come back. On just one moment. And this one can go away. There we go. And I'll just get participants. Waiting for. Alright, I don't see him, so I'm gonna go ahead and start, and then he'll pick up because I do know parts of these are. So let me go ahead and put this in presentation mode if I can. Just one moment, and. There we go, and Melissa, I'll just ask you if you see Robert McIntyre come back on to um, promote him back up.
Yes, we're looking for him.
Yeah, so, um, I'll give his bio, since um, I have worked with him before too. He has twenty years as a chief business official. He has actually successfully done several um, property movements. He's also, like us, been involved in four hundred-plus million-dollar bond programs. And then the uglier things like boundary changes and school closures. But most importantly. Um, he and Brianna from school services have significant experience in what's called the seven eleven committee management process. And so that's what we're gonna be talking about um, in just a moment while we're waiting there. Um, so, when you have property that you might determine to be surplus. Meaning that you no longer have use for that property in serving of students. There's a process by law that you have to follow. And the education code will authorize you to do several things. You can sell or lease for a term, the lease being um, a term of not exceeding ninety-nine years. Any real property there that is not needed for that. Now, when you do a sale, the proceeds can only be used for a couple purposes. The first one is capital outlay. So you sell one property to purchase another property. Or to do construction on properties elsewhere in your organization. Or the cost of maintenance that won't recur in the next couple of years. And I think. There he comes. So we'll see if he can activate and take over for me here. But, to do that, the board must appoint an advisory committee. This is not a board committee. It's an advisory committee that goes through the process to give recommendations. And Robert, if you're here and you can unmute, you can take over for me. Just waiting to see if he comes up. Okay, so while we're dealing with the technology, we'll kind of go through the overview of the process. So, before you can do anything with a property, so I'm gonna use for today's example. The Sea View property down on the bay. It's vacant. There's a flood channel right in between. There's really no possibility of building a school there. Um. We would have to go through the process under Ed Code seventeen three eight seven of determining it to be surplus. We would then have to make a declaration of our intent to sell or lease the property. Per the Naylor Act, there is a requirement that you offer at fair market value that property to other public agencies. Usually in these cases, there isn't much of a claim for that, but there's a process to go through. Um, and these happen to be other agencies that also provide childcare. The reason that that code, seven um, four eight nine is in there, is if you have already developed the property and it's. Designed as a school, you have other agencies that sometimes want to have access to it. When you have a vacant property, it tends to be slightly different. Then, if you've gone through those processes, you can go to public. Um, bidding, which is where you can put out the RFP. So, how do you get to the determination that it is surplus? This is where a seven eleven committee is responsible for the recommendation to the Board of Education. And the reason it's called a seven eleven committee is gonna come up on the next slide and it, it is almost too um, intuitive. It's because it can have no fewer than seven, but no more than eleven members. It's not so you can go get a slurpee there. And each of them have to represent very specific categories. It's similar to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee where there's a seven required. Here though, you can see it doesn't say how many have to be in each one, but you do have to have um. Membership that is consistent with the age and ethnic and socioeconomic. Composition of the district. You do want to have some business representative from within the community. Others that um, are landlords or renters in the specific area that's affected. You um, can have teachers or administrators or parents of students. And then often a seven eleven committee might involve having someone that has expertise. In building codes, land use, planning, understanding the zoning. Because one of the most critical pieces is zoning there. What those properties can be zoned for. Often, they have a very specific zoning. And you have to go through the city to get it changed, which can be a long process. Um, Steve and I happened to actually have worked with this firm before and it took, in one case, it took three years just to get the zoning done. On a specific one. For us, we're in a slightly better condition. Because right now, um, part of the twenty forty plan of the county and the unincorporated um, areas. They're, they're redoing zoning as they're starting to really look at modernization across the district. And so that does put us in a position where some of that zoning's already been done. But when you're doing the seven eleven, understanding what the possible options will be for that property. Before you even begin becomes very important as we go forward. So, the responsibilities of a seven eleven committee, um, and I feel um, Robert's pain. I've had that happen to me where I, hey, do we have you?
I sure hope so.
Okay, um, I got to the responsibilities of the committee and I'm gonna pass it to you. Um, I feel your pain because I've had that happen to me in the middle of a board meeting too.
I, 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 I apologize. Uh, it's been fun sitting through this whole meeting and I'm glad that we're actually uh, a- able to, to get through this. And didn't have to push it to the next meeting. Uh, I did hear quite a bit while I was waiting for my computer to connect. And one of the things that I wanted to point in, point out is under the Naylor Act, the reason it exists is for other public agencies. To try to preserve parkland. Uh, the rea- the problem is a lot of other uh, public agencies can't afford to maintain. That park space and that's why they're, they're not coming out of the woodwork these days, uh, like they would in years past to, to grab that property, but it is a possibility. So I didn't hear, di- did you talk about kind of the three ideas for existing property and why this group is coming together?
No, I, I was gonna leave that for you as part of the responsibilities.
Right. Okay, so the, the whole reason that, that a seven eleven committee is necessary is for a district to put forth property. For either lease or sale, you must go through the seven eleven process. Uh, in order to offer up a property for either one of those mechanisms. There is a third mechanism called an exchange, which is a property swap. Uh, that is also an option. But uh, in order to kind of operate with fidelity, that the district and the board. Uh, it led us to believe that they would like kind of all options to be on the table. And they would like the seven eleven committee to give a pure recommendation of what they thought the disposition of, of, of four pieces of property. Uh, could be and how they would rank order those options. And so today, what we're doing is we're talking you through the, the seven eleven committee process. Because the, the district does not need to construct a seven eleven committee to do what's called a property exchange. So should the committee through the seven eleven process and, and learning more about the properties, decide they want to suggest the district consider exchange for any of the properties? Well then, at least then the board has had that third-party input from the seven eleven committee, even though it's not required for that particular type of transaction. So this is more about being completely transparent of a board and getting genuine input. And so I think Tony has brought us up to this point. We're gonna talk about responsibilities of the committee. And so the responsibilities are laid out in Ed Code, Ed Code seventeen three ninety. Uh, and they, they say what those responsibilities are and, and I, I hate when people read slides to me, but the, the points are salient in this, this regard. And so making sure that we're looking at things like enrollment data and student migration data. And what that might do to our facilities' needs over time. Because we don't want to do anything with a property that we may need five years from now for students and make it uninhabitable for students. Uh, so we want to make sure we have a good, strong grasp of that. Now, keep in mind, if you do a sale or a lease, those tend to be very long horizon. Events, you know, sale is permanent, a lease could be up to ninety-nine years. And so, you know, you want to have the same. Uh, belief that you're not gonna need that property pretty much indefinitely, if you're gonna go down either of those roads. You also want to establish a priority list for the use of the surplus space. So remember, we talked about the idea of, of exchange. We, we talked about the idea of, of ser- uh, sale. We talked about the idea of lease. You know, once you sell a property, it's gone forever. Uh, when you lease a property, you're gonna get it back, but it may not be usable as a school. You may have to reconstruct facilities on it to use it again. And so.
Nevermind, but go ahead. Sorry.
And, and then of course, uh, so we established that priority list. Then we want to make sure that we've, we've really had uh, an open and honest conversation. About the need for the surplus space, uh, and that we make it a- available to the, to communities for uh. For acceptable uses within the community. So that, that's uh, Ed Code seventeen four fifty-eight there. And then of course, the final determination regarding the uh, limits of the use of space. So, I, I, as somebody who's done this in a couple districts, I can tell you, your, your neighbors. If you, if you're looking at a school site that's an infill on a piece of property in the neighborhood, they are going to have very deep. And strongly held beliefs on what you should and shouldn't do with that property. And, and so you just want to make sure uh, that, you know, this, this process gives those people an opportunity to be heard. For that to be weighed in into the cons- into the recommendations from the seven eleven committee. And then of course, uh, forward that recommendation to the, uh, to the, to the board. Next slide, please. So, one of the things that you have to do with the seven eleven committee and, and part of the reason Mr. McLaughlin's here. Is that the seven eleven committee is a Brown, it's, it's a board committee, which means it falls under the Brown Act. So I know we heard a community member say, don't you have to have two or three board members here for a Brown Act committee? No, a seven eleven committee is a, is a board committee. And so it does require there to be, you know, a, a quorum. And all, and follow lots of rules like filling out the Form seven hundred. And, and so the reason we point this out is because when you form a seven eleven committee. Normally, at the first meeting, you would bring the district's council in and they would run the committee through all the legal requirements. Because they, there are legal requirements in being in a board uh, committee. Uh, Mr. McLaughlin, did you want to say anything about that or did I, did I get the major?
No, I think you, you make a good point. And the, and the point of this is to just go back to your general idea of the advisory committee. That it's designed to get public input. That's why it's a Brown Act, meaning uh, the public's are welcome to view it. And also make comments and it's published slides. So everybody knows in the community that we're having these meetings. And conflict of interest is important, um, just from a legal perspective, because we want to make sure that. Everybody on the committee doesn't have a financial interest in what happens to the property. So there's a lot of laws that go into that and that's what we generally walk through the committee. When we meet, we make sure that nobody has a conflict of interest, meaning nobody's gonna get some kind of financial benefit. Whether or not the district decides to sell or lease. So that's the process, just to make sure that we're meeting that overall intent, which is to get. The community involved. We do that by number one, making sure the committee is made up of community members. And number two, making sure that all the meetings are published. Everyone's invited to come and participate, make comments, hold public hearings. So, the committee at the end of the day, when they go to the board, they can tell the board, we talked to the committee and we talked to the community. And based on these recommendations, this is what we're suggesting that the district do. So all those legal terms, we can get into the weeds if you'd like, but generally, that's the purpose. Just to make sure that the board is getting community input from the committee before it makes a decision as to what it wants to do with its properties.
Great. So, as Mr. McLaughlin said, this is, this is a, a, you're required to follow the same process as the actual board meetings. Are, so you have the notice requirements for board meetings, just like you would for a seven, a seven eleven committee follows the same notice requirements. As for regular board meetings, so three days in advance minimum. Uh, generally, you'd create a special webs, a special page on the district's website. So people can track what's happening with that committee, what they're doing, what they're looking at, and really create a real. and really create a real history of the endeavor and the transaction before anything is recommended to the board. And so that would be the goal.
And this is why we felt it was really important to have an outside consultant that leads this process so that there's no singular inside the board or inside the district voice saying, let's go this way, let's go that way. They facilitate the entire conversation to ensure that we do get the full dialogue as we go through the process.
Right, I know in my past experience, there was always, there's always going to be accusations if somebody doesn't like what's being recommended. It's not uncommon for people to make, you know, kind of statements like somebody's doing something that's not above board without proof generally, but it doesn't stop it from happening. And so providing a buffer is kind of the goal because frankly, I don't care what kind of transaction the committee recommends. I just clear care that we have a clean process and that the people who invest their time to volunteer to do this, that they're honored and valued and that what they recommend is put forth for the board's consideration. That is my purpose in this whole endeavor. Next slide, please.
Still your purpose, buffers are important.
And so we know that we had talked about initially, do we look at one side or do we look at all? And so I thought, oh, well, let's take one and figure it out. But as you're doing the committee, there may be a different purpose. And so I'm going to let him explain why there's multiple sites here.
Right. And so it's very difficult to get people to invest in the number of meetings you have to invest to actually turn out a 7-11 committee set of recommendations. And so what we found is doing one and then coming back a year, year and a half later, reconstituting a new committee because some people won't want to carry forward doing this iteration multiple times. Sometimes committee members who were on the first committee, maybe they weren't, ended up not being on a property that they cared more about. You know, maybe I was on the Adams one, which is across town from me because I didn't know you were going to talk about Seaview later. And so what we found is it's, the effort is duplicative. And so getting a qualified group together, talk about all the possibilities. And one of the framing requirements that the board set before us is we're not going to talk about any properties that have students on them. And so what we did is we said, okay, what are the properties that don't have students on them? Let's talk them through with a set of recommendations. The committee can even provide their suggested rank order of which properties they think the board should consider and what order, but the board has free rein to make any choices once the committee hands over their recommendations. And so, you know, the committee will say, for example, out of the four properties we talked about, here's the rank order, I think you should look at them. And within each one, here's the rank order of the type of transactions we think you should consider. And at that point, the board will have been, you know, informed by the community and has the ability to deliberate and move in the direction it would like. And so Adams was the first property. Adams is one of those kind of infill projects where you've got a lot of housing around it. This is the sort of property where neighbors will probably want to hear what's going on and have a say. And so we'll need to make sure we have enough meetings where they feel like they were heard and that that communication gets back not only to the committee but to the board. That's just shy of nine acres, the school was closed in 2009, but still very much a school site. Next slide, please. You have the Harmon Knowles property. This property looks like it was already leveled, actually. Is that correct, Tony?
Wait, so Louis?
That is correct.
Okay. So, you know, that creates a very different thing because a lot of times districts are putting up properties for their 7-11 committee because they're afraid, for example, like a charter might come in, you know, and decimate their enrollment. Well, the rules have changed around charter approval now. And so now you can look at the financial impact, you can look at the quality of your programs, the quality of their programs. Whereas before, it was just like if they asked for it, you almost kind of had to do it. I mean, with certain exceptions, but your hands were kind of tied before, whereas now they're not. So, you know, when you've got a property that has school, like actual classrooms available in it, it becomes open to people making requests. Well, when the building's been tore down, you can't use it, nobody else can really use it, at least not for a classroom, short of putting dropping portables on it. So here you have roughly nine acres property, Harmon Knowles closed in 2003. My next property, please. Portola Middle School is kind of unique because it's got a mix of facilities around it. So it'd be really interesting to see what the community engagement would be around this. And I think this was one of the ones, Tony, you were telling me, had real interesting response from the local zoning agency as far as flexibility.
So there is, and realistically, you're really looking at a divider where the arrow is going. So you've got the vacant portion of it. This is the property right now where we are going to be locating a couple of our district charter schools. And so they'll likely be staying on this path. So you're talking about the upper portion of Portola right now.
So not the entire six acres at this point?
At this point, that would be a conversation as the 7-11 committee goes, but there is going to be an active school operating, starting next year, on that we've been using it as a temporary campus for construction since it closed.
Okay.
So there's that one?
Yeah, right. And then the next site is Seaview Elementary School also has, appears to have been leveled. And given the position of this particular property in town could provide some really unique development opportunities as well. A smaller site at 4.56 acres, it closed, opened and then closed again in 2009 finally. So you've got four very unique properties. Each one of them is going to have a different sort of public response to the conversation. And so what we want to make sure we do is the first thing we do is we look at your district's enrollment trends. We have to look at them from two perspectives. Obviously, your short-term enrollment, what that's going to mean for your annual funding, which I know you and your business team are looking at very, very regularly. But then we also have to look at your kind of less conservative or more liberal enrollment projections because you have to have a space for every student who shows up, right? And so we want to make sure that we're not recommending that you that you put up a piece of property that you're very likely going to need to have students in. So we start by looking at those enrollment trends, we're looking at the value of the properties. We would look at the multiple use opportunities. So we would talk to people in county and city zoning and see what is likely to be possible from a development perspective. So that way, the committee can make an informed decision of, you know, when they make their recommendation, we recommend these types of things for the board to consider when they're making their choices. Next slide, please. So this is not something that typically happens in one or two meetings. I have done it in two meetings and it was painful. I certainly wouldn't recommend it that way. Normally, what you want to do is you want to walk the committee through at the speed that they feel like they can comprehend the data. And that doesn't mean it's overly complicated, but often it's a lot of data. And so, you know, our ability to get the data out in front of committee members before the meeting, getting it published so they have time to look at it, so they can formulate smart questions so they can gain a level of comfort with each one of these phases. So you see that first meeting, that's your organizational meeting where we would very much talk them through what we're talking through now. Where Mr. McLaughlin would actually go through all the legal forms and help make sure they get filled out properly and help them understand, okay, here's what you're doing when you start the committee. You also have to do this again when you leave the committee and all what their legal responsibilities are in between that period. Then, once we get them set up, and the second, typically that's not a super long meeting. That's kind of like the December board meeting after an election. You have to organize the group and they have to understand their purpose in that first meeting. In the second meeting, we really start talking about the demographic analysis, facilities, capacity and fiscal implications because each choice has implications. For example, under normal circumstances, when you sell a property, you can't just stick that money in your general fund. There's been some recent legal changes in the short term that if we can do something quick enough, that might be possible. But generally, that has to go into your facilities fund. Whereas if you go into a lease, that money can go into your operating fund. You know, the annual lease payments can go into your general fund for paying things like, for like teachers and they'll suck. An exchange is a little more complicated where you're doing a like-for-like on a property. But if you swap your school site for an income-producing property, say like an apartment building or a commercial property, then in theory, the lease, the revenue from that could also go into your general fund. So balancing your facilities needs, what you need facilities dollars with, with trying to maximize what you're putting in the classroom, that's part of what the committee needs to consider. Then we would dig, in the third meeting, we went into those sites. We'd talk about the pros and cons and possibilities within each site. We do, generally that analysis goes into meeting four before the group is able to start putting together what they feel like are good draft report and recommendations. And so sometimes we drag it out a little longer based on the committee's needs. But if the committee is able to move along, then we have an interest in moving them along. There's definitely no desire to drag it out a certain minimum number of meetings. We want to go at a pace that they feel comfortable when they put their name on that report. They feel like it's something that represents their diligence and their perspective and their recommendation to the board and the community. Next slide, please.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is bring up the actual sample example of the meetings too, as we have questions.
Right. And we also sent over an example, 7-11 committee member application for the board to use and consider. And if the board wanted to weigh in on a schedule, they could, of course, do that too on the front end.
And these dates are not the real dates, but it's to give an idea of what each of those meetings might look like. And this is all attached to the agenda for those that are looking. I mean, we'll try to paste it back in the chat, but if you go onto the district's website, you can see all these handouts.
Yes, it is attached to the agenda. So I have some questions and I'm sure some people in the audience have some questions. And then this is the last item that we are going to talk about on this evening. So I would like to go to slide, oh, this is interesting. So it's slide 22 of 86, but what slide number is it? Because I'm looking at the attachments myself. I know your thing is not 86 pages. I guess it would be. Just give you the title of the slide, sorry.
About the committee, I believe, is the page?
No, I'm trying to get to the one with the Naylor Act. Oh, overview of the process.
Yeah, this one.
Okay. So I just want to have you walk me through this or walk everybody through this. So the first thing is determination of surplus property to district.
Correct. That is, that is under the purview of the 7-11 committee. So we're going to operate all the, we're going to conduct all these 7-11 committee activities until we come to a conclusion, which will be a report to the board. Generally, it's in writing. Sometimes committee members like to come and present it to the board, but they're not required to. Sometimes they like for staff to present it on their behalf. However, they want that to happen, that report comes to the board. Then, if the board says we're interested in pursuing sell or lease, so we have an intent to sell or lease, meaning they didn't choose exchange, then they would declare that.
Well, let's back up just for a little bit.
Okay.
Excuse me, so determination of surplus property. So this 7-11 committee, this is an advisory committee, right?
Correct.
So they would come to the board with a recommendation. Right?
Correct.
Okay, and the board has the option after that recommendation is made to accept it, to reject it, or to do something completely different. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And for process, just to jump in, the first thing that we do is the board would give direction to say, we would like to look at all options and we would like to advertise for membership to then be appointed to this 7-11 committee.
Okay, so the 7-11 committee has some kind of context for their work. They're not just over there cooking up stuff in the pot and coming back with a recommendation, right?
Right, we would come to the board and you would make that determination. We want you to advertise for, and that was in our packet for applications.
Okay. So now move me to the second step.
So this is the point at which the board collectively decides if they'd like to move forward with either an intent to sell or lease. And so that you would have a resolution that Mr. McLaughlin and his team would put together that would initiate or declare that publicly.
Okay, and just to clarify, if we want to lease or sell for either one of them, we have to first declare the property surplus?
Correct.
Okay.
Not for exchange, which is similar to sell, but not. It's a slightly different process.
So in this meeting where, you know, this hypothetical meeting where they make a recommendation to the board to do X, is that the same meeting in which the board would declare the property surplus?
It does not have to be. So I
How could it be separate or help me understand that?
So when you receive the report, that's a great time for the board to deliberate, to ask questions, to draw understandings and then collectively come to an understanding as a board on how they feel about where, how they want to proceed based on the input they've been given. So you're not required to immediately take action on that report. You can deliberate, you can ask for more information from staff to fill in any gaps that you as a board feel like you need to before you can deliberate or move forward with any type of transaction. So it's not, it's not if then you must, if X, you must do Y sort of scenario. You can stop right there with their recommendation report, thank them for it and do nothing if that's what the board chooses to do. You're not obligated to move forward with any of their recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I was just, if you're still talking, keep going. I was just kind of like, amen, kind of thing, go ahead.
So no, I mean, the board remains in control pretty much every step of the process and that's part of why you have someone like Mr. McLaughlin here to make sure that you've really dotted every I and crossed every T that you're supposed to as a board. So that way, you know, you remain in the driver's seat. Now, if you as a board decide you want to look at selling or leasing the property, then you have to offer it up under the Naylor Act to other agencies. Generally, it's my understanding the Naylor Act was created to preserve park space, green space.
Let me back up just for a little bit back to the declaration. But before we do a declaration of intent to sell, we need to declare it surplus.
Yes, there is a resolution to declare the property surplus.
And that's before we do the declaration of intent.
Mr. McLaughlin, do you want to talk about the mechanics of the resolution process?
Yeah, it gets a little interesting because legally you can do both at the same time. You can declare the property surplus and also declare your intent to sell or lease. Or you can do it separately. And again, that goes back to the idea that the board initially gets the report from the committee and they might want time to chew on it, so to speak. So you have to have a board meeting in public where the board formally accepts the committee's recommendation. And what we usually see is you just have that meeting where they just go back and they say, thank you for the report. We have questions, we're going to chew on it, so to speak. We're going to look at it. And then the next board meeting or subsequent meeting, it doesn't have to be the next one, the board can come back and say, okay, we are going to declare the surplus, meaning we're going to announce to the world that we don't need it. And then we're going to go back and chew further as to whether or not we want to pursue a sale or lease. So you can do it in piecemeal or you can do it at the same meeting. You can say, we are going to both declare this property surplus and also declare an intention to seek a sale or a lease. So it's really up to the board how quickly they want to go and how they want to handle it. You could do it either way legally.
And because we have four properties, you may choose to do a determination on one of the four and hold the other three for a period of time as well. So all of those options will be on the table as we begin this process.
Yes.
Okay, now that's, this is helpful, thank you very much. So I'm going to go to the third one. Offer to public agencies per the Naylor Act. So talk to me about this park space. Do people have to use it as park space or has it expanded to they could try to buy it to put a shopping mall on it if they want? What are the, I've never read the Naylor Act, what are the confines of that?
So definitely, Mr. McLaughlin, feel free to jump in, but the Naylor Act is, do you want to, do you want to go? So definitely, Mr. McLaughlin, feel free to jump in, but the Naylor Act is, do you wanna, do you wanna go?
Yeah, yeah, so you you're right, so the Naylor Act, basically, the intent was to pursue preserve park space. So under that act, essentially, the district would send letters to certain agencies, most of them are statewide, citywide. Just saying, we have this property that has park space, if you're interested in preserving it as park space, then let us know. So you're right, so under the Naylor Act, anybody who's interested in it has to keep it as park space. And they'd say, yes, we're interested, we want to use it as park space, and then that essentially stops the process. So we go to whoever submitted interest and talk to them about what price they would pay for taking over the property. And continuing to use it as park space, so you you're correct in that that notice would make it clear to. The specific agencies that we have park space and if they're interested under the Naylor Act. Then they have to continue using it as park space. If they're, if we don't get a response from them, then we move on, so we we make it clear to them that if you're interested in the property. But you don't want to use it as park space, you'll have another opportunity, but you won't have it through the Naylor Act. Essentially, the Naylor Act gives them priority, it says, before we make this available to anybody to use it. If you're interested in using it in park space, you can let us know and then you get priority, meaning we negotiate with you directly before we go on. And make it available for anybody under the sun to use it for however they want, so. And correct, yes.
Pragmatically, though, what tends to happen is if you have an existing school that had a green field. That the public was using for recreational activities, what tends to happen in the Naylor Act. Is that there is a preclusion, let's say you're doing an exchange or a sale. And you're gonna develop that property, the Naylor Act could state that as part of that development in the zoning. That a portion of it stayed park space, it could state, no, we want to buy the entire property to enhance our green space in our city. In the olden days, that happened a lot more, now with the cost of property. You don't see public agencies buying vacant lots to create parks that often. It's more often plays in when you have an existing park as part of that parcel. That there becomes that attempt to try to maintain some green space for the community around. And that often, while the Naylor Act doesn't play into effect, the residents surrounding that property. Have the belief that it should, and so they put significant pressure on the developer to do that. Um, I'm familiar with that happening, where the Naylor Act isn't actually statute, but there's the perception of parkland. For the properties we're talking about, none of them are truly in the zone of Naylor Act. Other than if somebody wanted to build a park and that's.
So that's what I was gonna ask about, so like this Naylor Act part, right, like, cause my next question was, well, what is the definition of a park? And does any of our properties, I mean, I know some properties that we have do fall under that definition probably. But these ones that we're talking about, like, does the Naylor Act even apply? So like Adams. Seaview is not a park, although there is a park over there, actually.
So Harmon Knowles kind of plays in, if you take a look at the Harmon Knowles one for a second. It is, our portion of it is graded, but you can see right next to it. You have that park space, so assuming that we owned Hilltop Park, then you would have an issue. Going, wait, you're gonna try to sell the Hilltop Park and that graded lot there, you're getting rid of green space that the community's been able to use. So that would be a perfect example of Naylor Act playing in, but we only own this area over here, correct, Lewis?
Correction to that, we own about a third, two thirds of the park.
So we own to here, so there will be a potential concern. And so what you may see is while the Naylor Act, there, nobody's gonna want to buy it. You may have questions if you were to develop this property, for example, with additional houses. There may be conversations from the community saying, wait, we don't want to lose all our green space, you have to maintain some. I've seen that happen quite a bit, and that's not Naylor Act, but they'll they'll try to challenge under the Naylor Act. Even though that's not the correct term, but the others, as you can see, there's not a lot of green space.
So like this space, uh, so like the Harmonal space, somebody would try. Well, hold on, so the green space, I mean, I'm literally looking at green space, somebody is the one of the grass, but so like the green space. Is the brown part, is the graded part, it considered green space? I mean, I know it sounds silly, it's not green, but you know, is it cons- is it is it green space or is it open space that can be used as parkland?
Well, let's Stephen, the the legal definition, any lot could be purchased and created as a park if the city wanted to invest in that. Or. The piece on that entity, but it's not an active park, the brown there, this part is active clearly. Being used as an active park right now, and that's the only one that has any active park when you look at the others. Um, this is, there is a little community garden right here, I actually drove by it this weekend.
Where?
So there is. Uh, at Cortola. So on that hill there, there is, I believe, Louis, if I'm correct, there's a little community garden that is operating right. Here, just to the um, north part of the campus as you go up the hill, the rest of this is completely sloped and there's nothing there. Going on and then here, this is vacant, this park is not ours, correct, Louis?
Yeah, that's all by the.
Okay, but so we could, we're good, so by either way, what you're telling me for the Naylor Act. Whoever tries to buy it has to be trying to buy it to use for a park. And so what we're really looking at is essentially the county wanting to put a park at Seaview. Uh, the city of Richmond wanting to put a park in some of these places. And uh, the city of El Cerrito potentially, so that's what we're really looking at when we're talking about the Naylor Act, right?
Well, the Naylor Act, like we, yeah, so the Naylor Act only applies to property that's already being used.
Already being used as a park, so it's preserving.
Right, so if someone came, if a city came and said, I like that space and I want to turn it into a park. They can do that, but they don't, they don't get to do it under the Naylor Act, so what the Naylor Act basically does, it says. If you, we have an existing park, if you're interested in maintaining it. We're obligated to sell it to you for a certain price, it's a reduced price. So the Naylor Act gives them that advantage, if the city comes forward and says, I like your property, I know it's not being used as a playground. But I want to turn it into a playground, they don't have the right under the Naylor Act to seek it. They can seek it later during the other process, but they don't get the price break through the Naylor Act, so that's.
Okay, so none of the properties that you have on this are currently being used as parks, so let's move on past the Naylor Act. Take me to this one, cause this is the one that kind of worries some people, including myself, so. Adams, for example. There were people who wanted to purchase Adams in the past. Other public agencies. Charters in particular. Or charter operators. Are you telling me that we have to offer these schools, these sites, that's schools, uh, one. But these sites that we have to offer them, and if and if one of these, so like. So Adams, we would have to offer it. And if somebody said that they wanted to buy it. Like Caliber wanted to buy Adams at one point, they they're going somewhere else, it's not an issue, but let's like pretend that they still wanted to buy it, it's like Caliber wants to buy. Adams, are you telling me that when we get to this phase, we have to offer? And if somebody says they want to buy it, we have to sell it? To them instead of doing what we were trying to do in the first place?
So part of the seven eleven, before they answer on the legal yes or no, is that the committee would do some of the research. On whether or not that is a viable option for somebody else to purchase before they make that recommendation. We know for Adams, for example, we cannot use this building here due to seismic concerns. So Field Act has made us unable to use it as a school. The question we would have to determine in the process is, could a non Field Act compliant organization be able to use it or not? And that would be part of the process, and I'll let them talk from the legal side.
Quick question, didn't, wasn't there a resolution to tear Adams down? I remember Dr. Mr. Freeze talking about that at some point, didn't that happen or am I imagining this to grade Adams?
I'd have to go back and double check, but I don't believe there was a resolution to tear it down.
I should have said resolution, did you bring this up in a board meeting at some point?
We we, we brought it up when we were looking at options for Mandarin.
Okay, and then, yeah, cause it was something about tearing it down and it just went away and never came back, right?
Right, was that to get a proposal for the cost to tear the buildings down, which we did.
You did get a proposal?
Yes, well, we got it.
Okay, I'm meandering again, so I I I just thought I heard something, um, and I did, all right, so go go ahead. So the seven eleven committee would then. When they're considering what to do or what the property can be used for. They would consider whether the property could be used for a school.
As as part of their recommendations, typically, they're looking for the highest and best value use for for the district. But occasionally, you'll you'll get a recommendation that that, you know, parts of a of of a property should be sustained for certain reasons. Rather than the whole thing being uh developed for other uses. It it's rare that you don't get a, let's do something with the whole property, but occasionally, uh, we have seen where there was uh some green space built on. And and the um, the city didn't ask for it until it it became, it got published in the paper. That there was green space right next to an existing park and and then the community actually fundraised to pay for the service to a tiny little piece of land. And I'm talking like a a quarter of an acre out of like twelve acre piece of property, so it ended up just being a tiny little carve out. Uh, that ended up falling through, even though the community raised money for the for the on the city's behalf. But but the because the the property ended up going for exchange, the whole thing got set aside.
Okay, so that, I guess what I'm not understanding, if you help me understand this, so what I'm, so I get that there's a recommendation. And then there's a declaration, and then there's an offer under the Naylor Act, and now we're at this step. But how, but you're going back to the recommendation of the seven eleven committee, so once the board begins moving through this process, if it does. By the time it gets to the fourth step, which is offer to public agencies, why does the recommendation? Matter, are you telling me that? I I don't, that's what I'm I'm not connecting, like, why does it, why does it matter? Are you saying that, like, when the board makes its declaration of intent to sell, it's saying that we're only going to sell for these purposes? Is that the way it works?
Generally, you're not required to put bookends on it, some agencies do. Uh, I have done them both ways, where there was book, like bookends, you will not, you will only build within these development parameters, but you're not required to do that. Uh, generally, you can, you can say, great, we we have this intent, we we've we've chosen sell over leased, for example. So now we're gonna go through this process before we can put out an RFP, a request for proposals.
So so could we say, could the board say? We are not selling for a school. Could we do that?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, so the board, yeah, so the board can, I I think that's, you know, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. They can make a declaration and say, these are, we're gonna offer to sell and these are the limitations we're putting on the sale. Or they can just say, we're gonna sell for the best price we can get.
So if we have people, organization. Charters that we are concerned about purchasing this property. Because we know what we want to do with it, theoretically, we could build in limitations into the sale. So we don't have to worry about somebody coming in and, you know, saying, hey, we want to put a school on the property. And then we don't get to do what we were trying to do. And what I'm saying is illegal, to say it's illegal, but I'm trying to figure out, like, how do we get around some of these concerns?
So part of the process, and I'm gonna kind of help out, because from the legal side, unless you know all the constructs. There's a lot of different mechanisms, part of the process of going through to determine whether you're gonna deem something surplus property. The second you do that, you have all of these conditions. For example, if the board chose to do an exchange for a property that they had concerns about. In the exchange, you end up giving ownership to somebody else and getting a different property back there. But you're not subject to everything in the middle here anymore on that exchange process. So that might be a recommendation that comes out for one of the properties that the best value might be to do exchange. Versus doing sale versus doing lease. And as Robert said, the goal is to get the best possible value for the property in the district. And where Robert was talking about, sometimes the green space comes in, often seven eleven committees are looking at active school sites. Where you have declining enrollment and you have to look at other pieces, we're not talking about that in this scenario at all. We aren't, we're keeping our scope much more narrow than that. But if that was a concern that a property could go for a purpose that the board did not want. Then you have the opportunity through that process, either in how do you do your determination? Or the options that you choose to pursue before you make that declaration, did I explain that well enough, Stephen?
So it's either A, I mean, not privatizing, but it's either A, like we did in exchange, which cuts the middle, all of this stuff out. The uncertainty that we're talking about right now, or B, we just have to be very tight about building in. I shouldn't say that, building out what we don't want to see. Am I right?
So I'm gonna let the legal speak here.
Yes, yes, I, yeah, I I think that that's a correct summary, so. Um, yeah, the usually, you know, exchange is a different process and it's it's more free. Some of this, um, the steps here are a little confusing, but I think just to summarize it. So once you're done with the Naylor Act, whether or not you've complied with it or you figured that the property doesn't apply to it. That fourth step, that offer to public agencies, that's just sending them specific agencies notice. Saying, we have this property, we're thinking about selling it or leasing it, if you're interested, let us know. And if we get a response back, then we we're required to negotiate with whoever responds for sixty days. That's all we're required to do is just show good faith negotiations, we don't have to give them the property. We don't have to offer them for a certain price, we're just required to give them exclusive negotiation rights during that period. And at the end of those, if we decided for whatever reason, we couldn't come to an agreement, for whatever reason. Then we can move on to the public bidding process, so it's just kind of giving them the the first crack at it. So we give them notice saying, if you're interested, let us know and then we'll start negotiating just with you, so you have exclusive negotiation rights. If we don't get noticed from them, or we do and we negotiate, and for whatever reason, we decide we just couldn't come to a good agreement. Then we can move on to that last step, which is the public bidding process, which essentially opens it up to the public.
So let's say you get like, under the offer to public agencies, let's say you get like three or four, how does that work? The exclusive bidding, how does that work in that situation?
Yeah, so in that situation, all those those four parties that expressed interest, then you negotiate with all of them. And that's actually good in a way for the school district, because then you can kind of play them off each other. But you're limited within that window to just negotiate with those parties. So you talk to them and then and then the process is very generalized, or from a legal perspective, we can do whatever we want. We can put them in a room together and say, okay, who's giving us our best offer? You can negotiate with either one separately, together, however you want to do it. You just have to demonstrate that number one, you've given notices to those agencies, and number two, if anybody's responded. You've given them that exclusive window, if you get. to those agencies. And number two, if anybody's responded, you've given them that exclusive window. If you get more than one of the agencies expressing interest, then you as long as that you're not bringing in anybody else besides those parties that interest, indicate an interest, as long as you're giving them exclusive, it's not exclusive now, it's co-exclusive negotiation rights during that period, then you've complied with that section.
And do you guys recommend that districts do with all of the things that you're talking about right now, walking us through or walking me through these steps? Um, do you recommend that districts do exchanges or do these other things? And because the exchanges do seem less cumbersome.
You just asked probably the most loaded question.
Yeah, so we, yeah, and and exchange, again, exchange, the whole idea is a property swap, so there's pluses and minuses to that, because essentially what you're doing is you're giving property away and in exchange, you're getting property. So in some situations, school districts look at that and they say, well, we don't want to take another property, we want funding. So it depends on the circumstances and the situation. I mean, there is a benefit to the exchange that you don't go through this process, but the downside is it is an exchange, so you're not getting payment for the property, you're getting another property, so the district has the
Let me back out of that just a little bit. So like, um, this is just me personally and in context, like, I don't have any interest in selling district property. Um, but that's just me, right? But like, if, let's say, so when I asked, and I didn't give you the context and I apologize, so the context was for me like the exchange uh assumed that we were getting an income producing property. Uh, that that was just something that I left out, because that's all I care about.
Yeah, so I think the best way to to answer that is, it always depends on the property. In some cases, it is in the district's best interest to maintain the property and lease it out. Maybe it's already developed in a certain standard that can be used and you don't want to lose that asset. When you have a blank property that's graded with nothing there, exchange may have the most benefit because to do a lease, the people have to come in and they have to build something on there for them to have utilization of the property. And that build takes money for them to spend and that reduces the amount of revenue that you're gonna get from that property as they're developing it. Whereas in exchange, you're basically giving that property up, getting something else that is already in place to get revenue. So it can be a benefit in some properties, it can be a detriment in other properties. And so that, that's why you start, you can do a seven eleven committee and then ultimately not make a determination and choose to go the exchange route. And still avoid those other pieces because you feel that that's the right course of action. But you do the process to be able to get the pieces and understand all of the different options. And that's kind of the best recommendation, because you don't want to get accused of trying to just circumvent a process as well. One thing I've learned about working here is there's a lot of eyes and a lot of focus there and process matters. But also hopefully you're seeing why you have to have a center of experts. We are not, this is not our wheelhouse.
Yeah.
There's too many rules that we need legal and we need outside assistance to support to do this well and do it right.
Right. Uh, no, I definitely see why we need assistance for this. Um, I don't have any more questions, um, but there, we're gonna do public comment for people who want to comment. Uh, so I see seven attendees right now. Uh, if any one of them wants to comment or make comments, please raise your hand. Okay, nobody
Hands.
Hands. All right, so um, no public comment. Um, and I don't have any discussion. Uh, I do want to say thank you uh to Mr. McLaughlin and uh Mr. uh McIntyre. Uh, Dr. Wall, I'll talk with you offline. And uh, everyone, thank you for uh sticking around and uh and talking about all of these subjects because they were extremely important, our facilities. Master plan is extremely important. This is something that is very new for us, so it is extremely important um that if for nothing else, people were able to hear the questions that were asked. If for no other reason than that. Um, so hopefully, you know, if this stuff appears again, people will have been informed. Um, and I, and I got to be there giving pick. So uh, I hope that you all have a wonderful uh, the, Mr. Freeze, I see you.
Yes, I, just before we adjourn, I just have one question for consideration. Um, our next scheduled facility committee is May fourteenth, and because of the items that we didn't get to today, would like you to consider possibly scheduling another facilities meeting before the fourteenth. Um, so we get to the other agenda items, plus we'd like to bring another facilities update as well.
We'll talk about it all offline, so we're not in a meeting or a meeting. Okay, um, so thank you, everyone, uh, for uh your time. It is greatly appreciated. Uh, it really is. You all have a great uh weekend, okay? All right, bye bye.